Call the meeting in order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Gleene.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will stand for, we do have a quorum. We will stand for a moment of silence and then we'll stay standing for the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, if you could, whoever you talk to upstairs, asking for special guidance on this council tonight, thank you. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. This will be the first call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to view a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly in notice for discussion and legal action. There are sign up sheets in the back if anyone would like to speak. I will also give those that haven't signed up and put in the opportunity. Adeline? Adeline Lehrer? Is it Adeline? Where'd she go? Yeah, that's you. I just changed your name. I can't read the writing.
Oh, it's kind of sloppy. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we're hearing fine. Now, if you would say your name and where you live, we'd appreciate it.
Think of the movie Rocky.
Rocky?
Go Adrian.
Oh, okay.
The last time I was here on behalf of the dog park with us, I think roughly six months ago, so I think it's time for me to appear again. My needs probably are pretty small potatoes considering everything else going on in the city, but basically, when I came last time, I brought the needs of the dog park up. And about this much has been done. Not one tree has been put in. The water fountain's still gone. They haven't been watering the grass. I think there was a water leak for a while, so they turned the water off, haven't turned it back on. So, one portion of the dog park, a very small portion that's closest to the road, it was watered today, but the main section hasn't been watered in a while. So, basically, we were kind of, all of us at the dog park are already offered to pay for the trees. We keep being told you shouldn't have to pay for them. Well, obviously, it seems like we have to offer because they're not being done. So, we are grateful for all the trees on Willow and all the trees that have been put in and all the other parks, but the dog park still remains, two sections have no trees, no shade for the summer.
Okay, I thank you for the input, and I will direct our parks and staff to take care of those issues before the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Denise Colbert.
Mayor, council. Good evening. This is kind of a public service announcement. The First Presbyterian Church on Butte, June 22 through the 26, is going to run a vacation Bible school for the children from 1 through 6th grade. We'd like to have all the children in the community to come. We're going to have games, snacks. It'll be a good time for a couple hours, and we'd love to see as many as we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other?
Forgot. It's from 9:30 to 11:30, and just call the church to register.
Thank you. Or is there any other member of the public that has anything they'd like to talk about? CNN will call close to the public. Well, these are two presentations that no council, no staff, or no person of authority likes to have to do, but we've got two tonight, and I'll be coming down there. Two people leaving our employment, and I'll come down there to the mic and present them. You know, this lady that's retiring tonight, getting ready to move up to the Heber, to the high country, she came to work for us, oh, about 11 years ago. Kathy Kaiser came to work for us as court clerk in August of 2004. In 2007, she was promoted to the court administrator, and then the council appointed her to magistrate in 2010, I think, is when you become magistrate. So, she's been in town employee for the last 11 years, and our judge for about half that time. On behalf of the town council staff and citizens, we wish her well in retirement, and I don't have to tell you that she will enjoy every minute of it. I'm going to hate to lose her, being a judge in a missile court is not the most fun thing in the world to do, because usually, somebody is right and somebody is wrong. You're going to make half the people happy half the time. You never make them all happy. Kathy, if you would, please. You councilmembers want to come down front, we'll take a picture with our retirees. Kathy, we have a little memento from the town that says, "Making the Difference." Awarded to Katherine Kaiser for your loyal dedication and unwavering commitment. Thank you for your significant contributions towards our goals and your indispensable support of our mission. From the town of Florence, from 2004 to 2015.
Thank you.
And retired.
Retired.
Katherine Kaiser, ladies and gentlemen. Can we go over there? She got her award and was going to go sit down, but we're not letting her off that easy. As a judge, she should be able to communicate. Is there anything that you would like to say, Kathy?
Oh, not yet. I just want to say thank you all. I've enjoyed my time here, and I will miss the citizens and the town of Florence and Minsley. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. This guy I really don't want to do, but I've got to. He been around here a little bit longer, well, just about as long as I have, not quite. He's lost more hair than I have, I'll say that. Tim, come up. It's unusual these days to have an employee who's retiring who has spent their entire career with one agency. But that's the case tonight with Tim Bruce, who recently retired as a police officer from the town of Florence Police Department. Tim was hired in February 1995 and has served the town, our citizens, for the past 20 years. But not only has Tim served us here in Florence, he has served our nation in the military and served several deployments. So, we're able tonight to thank him both for his commitment and dedication to us here in Florence, and also for his service to our country. Tim, we're glad that you will continue to be a resident of Florence in retirement, and we wish you only the best in years to come. On behalf of the town council, myself, please accept this, Making the Difference Award for the town of Florence, and Tim. Thank you, bud. I appreciate it. And Tim's a good friend, too. So, before you get to talk, we're going to go over there and take some more pictures. And there's one more guy that wants to talk to you. I don't know why, but Chief Hughes.
You know, it's a pleasure when you have an employee like Tim. Tim's been an exemplary employee. You know that he comes to work, and he's one of those guys that is there day in and day out, and just goes out and does his best to keep this citizen safe, just to do the best for our community. Tim will be sorely missed and hard to replace. God bless and thank you for your work, Tim.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thanks, Dan. Well, you get the last word, Tim.
Yeah, I'm not much for speeches, so thank you.
Short and sweet. We're going to, again, congratulations to Kathy and Tim for their years of service. Thank you very much on behalf of the council. We're going to take about a 15-minute break for refreshments out here in the hallway. There's cake and water, no tequila. No, okay. I tried. So, if everybody, if you'd like to, go under the back, and Kathy and Tim will be out there and get to know them a little bit. Okay, if I have everybody's attention, we're going to restart, reconvene the meeting, or through the presentations. Now, we need a motion to adjourn to the Board of Adjustments. Make a motion, we adjourn the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to adjourn to the Board of Adjustments. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 7A, Public Hearing and Approval Discussion, Approval or Disapproval of a Variance Request, Number PZ1528BOA, regarding the use, that's what's wrong, regarding the use of barbed wire fencing on a portion of the Johnson Ranch Estates property in Florence, Arizona. Mr. Echols.
Mayor, members of the, Chair, members of the Board of Adjustment. We don't get too many variances, so I have to remember who I'm speaking to and who's handling the item tonight. This is a variance request tonight. It's a quasi judicial action, as you're aware. I think we, on the average, do about maybe one, possibly two variances a year, which is actually a pretty good thing. You do too many, and you probably have a lot of problems with your codes. So, every once in a while, they will come up. You have a request tonight that's been made by Mr. Robert Longmaker of the WLB group on behalf of Johnson Ranch Estates to allow for the use of barred wire fencing on the subject property. This is a variance from Section 150.150 of the Florence Development Code pertaining to barred wire and electric fences. It's to utilize barred wire on portions of the property of the Johnson Ranch Estates PUD property that is on the east side of Highway 79, because the portion that was on the west side is under a different ownership and is not covered in this case. Only the portions that are owned by Mr. Johnson are covered here. A while back, we actually received a complaint that some barred wire fencing was installed on a portion of the property, and we looked at possible scenarios on how to address that. Number one, just through simple code compliance, the property owner wasn't interested at that time in removing the fencing. We reviewed the code and determined whether it would be appropriate to modify the code. We really didn't think that this was a town Y type of issue and that it really warranted modifying the code. So, the third scenario that we came upon is the one that's being presented tonight, which is to address it as a variance. So, as you all recall, when you go through the variance, the applicant must show, must respond to the questions and develop positive findings to the items that are covered in your report. And I don't know at what point the, our legal expert would like to swear us in, but I think that probably wouldn't be a, probably would be a good idea to do it about now, before I get into the report, so I don't, we don't necessarily repeat ourselves.
Did you want me to swear?
Yes, that would be wonderful. I want to go over the questions and the findings that we have, and have the applicants prepared to address them as we go along. The first question that arises in a variance request, are there special circumstances or conditions applying to the land building or use referred to in the application that do not apply to other properties in the district? The quick finding on that is staff contends that there are no special circumstances and conditions applying to the subject land that do not apply to other properties in the district, that there are special conditions. Number one, the property, as you can see on your property, on the PowerPoint exhibit, this is a large property, over 1,000 acres. It's the majority of the Johnson Ranch PUD property. It's a large property in its geographical area, and historically, it has been used for grazing and agricultural types of uses. The property is also adjacent to areas in the unincorporated county or the state land where agricultural uses do exist. And furthermore, in the PUD, as noted in the report, the zoning does allow for traditional farming and grazing uses to continue on the property until such time the other uses that were outlined in the PUD can occur, which are really triggered largely by when the market is ready for those uses to occur, the housing, the commercial, multifamily, other uses. So, if you would like, I can go through all of them, and then we could have them respond, or would you like to address each point individually?
Well, rather than have them stand up there all this time, why don't we go ahead and you go through all of them, and then at the end of it, we can come back and you can ask some questions.
Okay. So, Item B, that such circumstances were not created by the owner or the applicant. Staff contends that the special circumstances applicable to the case were not created by the owner or applicant. The main reason why the property is going to continue to be utilized for a farming or grazing use until it's developed the way it's envisioned in the PUD is because of the market, which I alluded to in the last response. Certainly, the town and the property owners would love to see the property developed for the higher and more intense uses. They would love to be having the rooftops go up on the property right now. They've invested a substantial amount of time and money preparing the property for just that. They've gone through general plan amendments, through zoning amendments, negotiated a development agreement with the town, also have put in the initial infrastructure for water and sewer, and also have been working with the utility companies to bring utilities to the site, and also coordinating with all the surrounding landowners in that area to promote future development in the area. The code also, I'll mention that the Section 150.150 of the code, we believe wrote the section on the barred wire fencing as a means of protecting residents in a more urban type of situation, and not really in a case like this where you have a property that's out on the fringes, really in a rural area surrounded by rural development, by properties that are being utilized for grazing and for agricultural purposes. Item C, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not so typical or reoccurring in nature, ask to make reasonably practiceable the formation of a general regulations for such conditions or stipulations. This item is referring to, is this a situation where we should look at amending the code to address this type of scenario? But in the almost nine years that I've been here, this is actually a very unique case and the first time that it's come up in this exact type of scenario. So, our finding is the subject property is very unique in its location, its size, and other factors, as noted below in the report. That is not a case where regulations should be repealed or modified townwide. Again, the size of the property is unique, 1,100 acres plus. The property is outside of the urban area. The barred wire is actually fairly consistent with the area. You have a dot utilizing barred wire along a lot of their highway. You have the state land whenever they have a farming or leasing, a lease for grazing. It's very common for the state land department to allow barred wire on their properties and in the unincorporated areas. It's fairly consistent. It is a use that's, grazing is a use that's consistent with the rural nature of the area right now. We know that's going to change over time, but for now, it is something that is consistent. We don't believe that it would be a nuisance in this area to the public or the community. And again, the use of the barred wire on the property, it would be something that would be temporary. Now, temporary is a relative term, I understand, but as the property develops phase by phase, piece by piece, there would be no barred wire allowed on any of the uses that are being Item D, that the authorizing of the variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of substantial property rights. And staff has found that approval of the variance is necessary for the property owner to graze cattle on the property until the market can support the development of other uses as prescribed by the master plan. Again, the property owner does intend to develop the property for these higher, more tense uses. It's just as much as he's doing right now to encourage that, the market is still lagging a little bit behind. In addition, the barred wire, it is a proven and effective means of containing cattle on the property. It does allow that particular use to occur, to contain the cattle, and to keep them from going out into Florence Kelvin Highway. Other busy roads are trampling through adjacent properties. And Item E, authorizing of the application will not be materially detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity, adjacent property, or to the neighborhood or the public welfare in general. I noted before that there was a citizen that complained about the barred wire, but in posting five signs out in the area, on the property and around the property, and also sending public notice, we have not received any complaints, any verbal or written complaints about this particular, about this particular case. We do not believe that it would have a negative or detrimental impact to the area. And as I noted about keeping the cattle on the property, we go back to the open range law, and specifically, the cattle grazing typically have the right to go out beyond the property boundaries, and it's typically the person outside of those boundaries that is responsible for the containment of those, of the grazing cattle. So, actually, by doing this, he's preventing that from occurring, from the cattle going out into the road or trampling through an adjacent property owner's yard. So, based on the findings that we've come up with, which are generally consistent with what the applicant also prepared in their report, if we find that these findings of fact are appropriate, that we would suggest that the variance be granted by the Board of Adjustment.
Would you like to address the council or the board on the application before we ask the question?
Good evening. Rob Longmaker, I'm with the WLB group. I'd just like to say briefly that we agree with Mr. Echols' report and findings. Mr. Johnson and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any question they'd like to ask of the applicant? No, do we have the public hearing after we ask our questions? Yeah. You don't have any questions at this time?
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, I had a question. Are you posting signs along the fencing for, to notify people that there is fencing there now to avoid any accidents? I know you state that there are trespassers that come along, and you want to keep them off your property. Is your fence going to be posted?
George, could you speak into the mic, please?
You'll have to excuse me, I lost my one hearing aid. I'm having kind of a hard time.
I'm just in.
Say if we were going to post it with no trespassing signs?
Yes. The reason why is because several years back, we had a young person that was on an ATV that basically ran into a fence and was very critically injured, and I was just wondering if you've had any situations where maybe you should post the fence, or are you planning on posting the fence?
Yeah, we are very definitely, and there's a legal footage, and we'll abide by that. Every so many feet, there'll be a no trespassing sign.
Okay, thank you, sir.
But it's for safety, yes.
Do you have anything right now? Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question for Mark. Do we have any other PUDs that will allow barbed wire fencing in? Do we have any other PUDs that will allow barbed wire fencing in?
Councilmember Anderson, Mayor of Council, written, this is the first time that I'm familiar with the variance request for, for this, and then written into the PUD, I don't recall that we've had a PUD since I've been here where we've written language in allowing for, for barbed wire. But in some cases, certainly, there would have been existing grazing or barbed wire fences or other uses that were occurring, and that, that remained on the, on the property. So that would be grandfathered in.
I can see the grandfather, but this is a little bit different.
Yes.
I had the same questions as Becky, and I'm also wondering to add to that. Do we need to add the verbiage into this, that there will be signs every X amount of feet to be in compliance with the Arizona state law?
That would not be a problem to add that into the stipulations if we wanted to recommend an approval. That would be fine. I believe it's something can, we can do administratively, but it also would be a fine condition to, to require the signage to be posted, to both notify folks of the, of the use of the barbed wire and for, and for trespassing. Is that a signage to that effect? Is that appropriate?
We're agreeable to including a stipulation that would require no trespassing signs on the property.
Okay. Or just in some forewarning, because I, as many of you know, I grew up back east, and unfortunately, there were a few stories that made the news where some children, as well as adults, were beheaded or injured by the barbed wire on snowmobiles, so we just want to make sure that we avoid any possibility of that. And then also, in reading it, setback in accordance to ADOT. As you're building, how will that impact the barbed wire that's there when you proceed with developing?
We will remove the wire on areas as we develop them. Now, we will also put no trespassing signs on state right of ways and also on state land. We will make sure it's all, all, on all fencing, even if it's not ours.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question was for Mark. I wanted to touch base with you before about what, who filed the complaint, if you can't say who, I understand, but what did the complaint specifically say?
Council, Vice, Vice Mayor-
Board member.
Board, Board Member Walter, getting, have to get, remember the Board of Adjustment. Members of the board. The complaint was specifically just to notify us that barbed wire fencing was, was going up or had been installed. There was no complaint about it, no concern specifically about it, it was just letting us know that it was, that it was going on the property.
Okay, thank you.
I'd, I'd like to clarify that a little bit if I can. There was an ex-employee of the mine that came to me because the mine had to put in slick wire fencing around the mine. I went to Mark, and Mark had already got the same complaint, and that's why we're here today. It was brought to me, and I, and I told the person that I'd take it to Mark and we'd get to the bottom of it.
Okay.
The, if I understand right, as to Vice Chair, or Vice, Vice Board Member, or Member of the Vice Squad, or whatever you are tonight, the state highway along 79 is a right of way fence, it's a barbed wire right of way fence, that Mr. Johnson does not have any control over, that is a state issue, not his issue, just for clarification on that portion on 79.
Okay.
That's a state right, a highway right of way fence. My question is on this, is the red the indication of the existing, and are you planning on any other besides that?
I didn't hear that.
Is the red on, on the, the map that the council was presented with showing, there in the orange or yellow, whatever you call it, that's the existing fence line, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there any, are you anticipating having to come back and, and create more fencing out there at this time?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, and if it does happen, the only place that there would be additional fencing would be north of Florence Kelvin Highway. At this point, pretty much all the property in the south side of Florence Kelvin Highway has fencing either on Mr. Johnson's property, along the highway that was installed by ADOT, or along the state land that was installed by the state land department. So future fencing would occur north of Florence Kelvin Highway, yeah.
So you're connecting up then with state fences to what you're doing?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any question? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If there's any comment on, on the hearing of our variance, PZ 1528 BOA. Does any member of the public have any questions?
I do.
Well, can you come up to the mic, please?
I'm not sure exactly where this fencing comes in line with my property, but I have a fence existing there that's 1,320 feet. I was wondering if they were, if they put in a new fence, would they remove it in a safe manner and put it where I could get to it, if they're going to use theirs?
Where's your property at?
My property's from Sun Air, and it'd be south about 1,320 feet between, about where the line is, it shows. I really don't have a good map of it, other than what they sent me in the mail. I have this map, but I really can't tell where my property lies in this.
Is your property north of Kelvin Highway?
Uh-
If you're going out Kelvin Highway, it'd be on your left.
Is it north?
Yeah.
No. Yes, it is.
Your, your property, if it's north of Kelvin Highway, won't be affected at all due to this. If you take a look at the map, it's on the south side of Kelvin Highway.
Yeah, it's north and it's south of that line you have there.
It is south of the line?
I believe.
Mark, you know-
If the property owner is going to, if there's a, the property owner's only going to touch fencing that's on the property owner's property. They are not going to touch the fencing that belongs to another property owner. Now, if they, if there's a situation where perhaps a fence was built off of a property line, then I would assume Mr. Johnson would work with an adjacent property owner to, to rectify that situation and, and clear that up to mutually, in a beneficial way. But if you, if you are adjacent to any of the perimeters of the, of the property and, and your fence is on your property, that should not be an issue. He should not be touching any fencing that's on your property or adding any fencing to, that would be off of his property.
Well, I really don't have a, a perfect map of where this line is.
We would be happy to get your information, and, and I would coordinate with you and also the property owner to make sure that-
Sounds good to me.
-address your property.
And for the record, sir, can we have your name?
Gary Tryon.
Okay. And do you have Mr. Tryon's address, Lisa? Would you get that before he leaves so Mark can have that, and we can make sure and get the notification properly?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Bill, do you have any questions now after listening to everything?
Well, yeah, I've, I've had a few people ask me how long this is, the cattle are going to be out there, and I said, I don't think it'll be there very long because, you know, they're developing it, they're moving forward on the development, but, so I'm just long, I don't know. They, they thought we should put a time limit on it, which I think, you know, wouldn't be a bad idea, because, you know, they don't want a permanent cattle ranch out there because it is in the town limits. But I think that Mr. Johnson is serious about moving forward on it, and he is, he's shown that he's moving forward on it. But I just wanted to put that out there because I have had people, you know, ask me about it. And once we do this, then it could be, without a time limit, it could be a permanent cattle ranch. Is that, is that right, under the zoning and, and the way the PUD was written in, is that right, Mark?
Well, Board, Board Chair, members of the board, Member Hawkins, until the property is developed, it can be utilized for the uses that it was historically allowed to be utilized for. That would be agricultural and for, and for cattle grazing. But certainly, with the amount of time and money and effort that's been put into, to the pre-development stages of this property, there would be no return on investment to, to prolong the grazing of, of cattle on this property. The, the property owner absolutely intends to continue with the development plans for the property and/or to selling parcels of land for development. There just is, the, the cattle on the property right now is just that that's what the, that's what the market can't support, so at least you can get some return on the, on the property, but certainly not anywhere near compared to what we've all envisioned for the, for the development.
Thank you. Becky, do you have anything else? Valerie? John?
Well, I, I share, Councilman Haw, or Board Member Hawkins' concern about this being open-ended. I'd like to see some kind of parameters put around it. We know when this is going to end because I know out where I live, which is in a PUD community, we have a dairy farm close by, and we are, we're suffering from that right now with all the flies and things that, that go with cattle. So I wouldn't want to put that on people moving into that community, that they move in right next door to a cattle lot.
Derek?
I have nothing at this time.
I'd like to reiterate, I think Mr. Johnson, I don't think he's bought this for a cattle ranch, but I just wanted to, you know, I had some people who had concerns, and I wanted to throw it out there, just to let people know that, you know, we are paying attention. But I have, I, I believe he's moving forward. I don't think he's invested the money that he's invested to run a cattle ranch. But like I say, I, when my constituents come to me and, you know, have concerns, I just want to make sure that we go in depth and, and make sure everybody is on the same page.
Are we allowed to ask?
Well, I'm, I got something I want to say about it before we do anything like that. The, and I understand what you're talking about, about, but I don't understand about creating a cattle ranch out there on that desert. That feed's almost gone now.
Well, I, I-
It ain't going to be there a lot longer. And I think the thing that, that drill or drives any development is the economy. And until the economy is right, Mr. Johnson protecting this portion of his property out there where running cattle, I like it, due to the fact of, because of the, the open range law that's out in that area, this is going to, the possibility of it stopping an accident involving an animal that is pastured out there, you know, that lessens that occurring this way. On a time element though, Bill, I, I have a time, I have trouble putting a limit on it, due to the fact that we don't know, if the economy goes sour tomorrow, and it's two or three years before he can start it, but he's got to take that fence out in six months, let's, just using that as an example, I think that we're getting, you know, it's his property, he's protecting it. I don't think a time limit is due on this. I think that once we put it in, it's put in, because he's going to take it out when he develops. But if, if the, if the economy goes to where it's not profitable for him to develop, he still needs to protect his property. When we pass this ordinance, when did we pass this? Two years ago, three years ago?
About two.
About three years ago?
About two years ago, I believe, at the most.
We didn't take into consideration, I don't think enough in, in looking at it, due to the fact of, the more we annex, the more farms we're going to come into, the more range land we're going to come into, and if, if we have a, a, something on our books that says a rancher or a farmer can't put up barbed wire fence around his property to keep livestock in, it's going to be harder for us to annex their property. And that's what I was going to make a suggestion after the meeting tomorrow, is that we, we address this issue on agriculture zoned land, because slick wire just does not keep a beef in. A, a cow is curious, and they'll go through that fence if they can, but if there's barbed wire there, it kind of slows them down a little bit and makes them think twice about doing it. So I think a time limit, I don't see the, where the need for a time limit is on it. That's, that's my own comment on that.
Well, I agree with you on that. Like I said, I believe he is, he is going to move forward on it. I was just putting it out there that, because I, like I said, I was approached by, you know, some people that were concerned, and that's all.
Well, as board members, we're supposed to do that, and-
Yeah.
And, I mean, we can have different opinions, that's just my opinion, it doesn't need to be, for those reasons, I mean, that's... So we need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve variance request number PZ-15-28 BOA regarding the use of barbed wire fencing on a portion of the Johnson Ranch Estates property in Florence, Arizona.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to approve variance request number PZ 1528 BOA. Any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries. Need a, a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from the board.
Of adjustments?
Of adjustments.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn from the Board of Adjustments. Any other discussion? Mr. Johnson, do you have something you want to say?
Yes, could I have a, a moment to address the council?
It's too late, I'm afraid. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to pray a moment today, depending on what we're doing.
Okay, we can bring that up in the call to the public if you want to hang around that long. I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay. So we've had adjourned from the Board of Adjustments, correct?
Did they vote on it?
Did we vote on it? Did we vote on it? Okay, we voted on it, okay. Consent agenda.
Item nine, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of a consent agenda unless a member of the council or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of the Parks and Recreation Fellowship application, a special event liquor license for the Fourth of July, Freedom Fest on July 4th, 2015, at Heritage Park. Item B, approval of task order number one with Baxter Design Group LLC for design services for the Main Street Extension projects for $61,400. Item C, approval of change order number three with DBA Construction, Inc., for paving within the Turner subdivision for $11,331.54 with a total project cost not to exceed Item D, ratification of canal right of way use agreement between the Town of Florence and the United States of Ameri Bureau of Indian Affairs San Carlos Irrigation Project. And item E, approval of a right of way between the Town of Florence and the United States of Ameri Bureau of Indian Affairs and San Carlos Irrigation Project for the Terrace Worry Square Project. This one also authorizes the manager, town attorney, and the mayor to proceed with any documents that are necessary after the meeting. Item F, authorization to dispose of town's assets listed on the June 1st, 2015 Request for Council Action Form per Policy. And item G, approval of accepting the registers of demand ending April 30th, 2015, in the amount of $4,45,617.15. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda for this evening's meeting.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
Item F?
B, C, and G.
Okay, we have item B, C, F, and G. Any other?
I'll make a motion, we approve- I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with the exception of, was it B?
No, we got four of them.
Okay, it was B, C, and D, right?
B, C, G, and F.
And F, oh.
B, C, F, and G.
Okay.
But before we go, before we ask for a second for the motion, I need to ask the public, is there anything they'd like to take off the consent agenda? Okay, we have Bill's motion, we need a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda items A, D, and E. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call-
No, no, you said A, B, and E.
A, no, A, D, and E.
A, D, and E, thank you for the clarification.
I thought it was B, C, F.
Yes, B, C, F, and G.
That's what we're talking about, hold.
Yeah. Those were the four. So we're approving A?
Okay, we're approving A, D-
E.
Is in David. And E is in Edward.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B?
Uh, item B, uh, is motion to approve task order number one for Baxter Design Group for services on Main Street Extension for $61,400. I'd just like to have a better understanding what that's about.
John?
Mayor, members of council, good evening. The Baxter Design Group was your engineer for the design of the Main Street project. If you recall, then in January of 2015, I brought forth a professional services agreement to, to try to capture some of the design functions that were occurring in Public Works in my, my short ninety, ninety-day stint there. Baxter has been doing considerable work for the Town of Florence, and this is a way of capturing through a professional services agreement the work that he's doing. This week, you will see this item for the Main Street Extension. Next council meeting, you will, you will see another task order for Baxter Design Group for the Turner subdivision design work.
What, what is this extension?
It is this, uh, it's the Main Street project that begins here by Territory Square and wraps up to Highway 79. It's the temporary access road that council had provided for.
Yeah, I thought we'd already approved that.
Uh, yes, sir, you have. This was a piece that was never codified, and so Jared Baxter and I sat down and said, "Look, I'd like to pay you for some of the work that you've been doing." And so we entered into a professional services agreement for that work, and now we will do task orders to capture the individual projects.
This looks like we have the cart before the horse here. The work's done and you're just not getting approval on it.
I would not disagree with that statement, sir.
Okay, all right. I'm satisfied with that answer.
Okay, John, go ahead with C.
Uh, C is a change order, and I hate change orders. What's, what's the change order about for $11,000?
Um, change order three specifically, well, let me just go through the, the narrative. You have a, you had a contract with DBA Construction to do grading and concrete improvements of the Turner subdivision. Twenty, Twentieth Willow and, and, I'm blanking on the other, the other road. It's adjacent to the, the high school property.
Central? Central?
Central, yes, sir, thank you. And you had a contract with DBA Construction to do all of that work and noted that the grades were high. So we entered into a contract for DBA to remove excess dirt. You then followed that with a, a, a change order with Apache Underground to install water and sewer improvements. Then you entered into a third agreement with, a change order with DBA Construction. I believe this, the second for DBA Construction to come in and actually pave the streets. This one is, there was some additional work that was necessary after they paved the streets. We had to feather out some of the existing asphalt pavement to match that of Adamsville and, and also to raise water, water valves to grade. So this specific contract is for the feathering in of the asphalt as well as raising the utilities, the, the water valves to grade.
Well, it sounds like we needed that, but that, you know, it bothers me when we enter contracts not to exceed a certain amount and we don't get all this stuff engineered in or whatever. You know, why didn't we get all this done at the beginning?
That's a, that's a good question. This is one of those projects where, um, we're catching up. I, let me just state that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item G, you want to discuss?
Uh, item G, I just had one question. There was a, an item there that showed up twice, a payment that we made to the Town of Coolidge for $23,000.
Mike? Mayor and council, Councilmember Anderson, the payment for, to Coolidge was for cart services, one for fiscal, this fiscal year and one for 2015, 16. And we did, we wanted to pay it in light of the expenditure limitation and not have that go against next year's expenditure limitation, if we could.
So you made two payments, what you're saying, one for this year and one for next year?
That's correct.
Out of this year's budget?
That's correct.
There will be no payment in next fiscal year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, item F, Tara?
Okay, I had a few items on item F. The first one regards to the garbage trucks that we are disposing of. I had a few residents contact me, I talked with the town manager, and I wanted to seek some clarification because as we discussed a few years ago when we moved to privatization of the garbage company, every time the contract was up for renewal, that's when we decided as a council, what direction are we going to move towards? Are we going to continue with the outsourcing? Or are we going to look at getting back into the business? Because we have that one point-
Approximately one point three.
Million dollars that we have waiting, and we were making the choice at the time to not touch any of the dump trucks.
Are you talking about dump trucks or garbage?
Garbage trucks.
Garbage truck. How many do we have that we're auctioning, that we're sending to auction?
Vice Mayor, uh, Mayor, Council, we actually have three at this point in time. Two of those are close to the thirty-year mark. And if you all recall, when we brought the original Rad contract to you all, we were gonna end up having to replace some of those trucks as well. So two of them are close to thirty years. The third truck is close to twenty years old. They are sitting there, they're not being operated on. So us having to do annual maintenance to them, the value is dropping quickly on those trucks. So with them approaching over thirty years, we really need to do something. That contract with Rad is approximately three years longer. That'll come back to council at that point in time to either renew or terminate that contract.
Now, I was also thinking, those garbage trucks, because on one of them, I noted that it was in fair condition and it needed, or dump truck, it was in fair condition and needed two tires. Now, the town has the program where it will drop off a truck at your house where you can load it up, you pay a nominal fee and they take it away, and we're able to dump it. Is that an additional truck that we would be able to put into service?
I think at this time, the Public Works Department has approximately two vehicles that they can utilize for that purpose. And really, the demand for them doesn't happen that often. It just happens sometimes at the same time when people want them, but there's not a lot of demand, but that program is there.
And I also think it's because we're under-informing the citizens that we have that because I actually took advantage of that program. And when it was out in front of my house, nobody, nobody knew what it was. And so I put it on Facebook, I talked to my neighbors and said, you know, you can rent this garbage truck, this dump truck from the Town of Florence. It's a nominal fee, you can fill it up and they'll take it away.
And in conversing with you, Vice Mayor, Mr. Knutson already knows we're gonna try and update the website, put some information out there because we do need to inform the public a little bit better on that program.
How many dump trucks do we have available for that, for that program at this time?
Well, we have one trash truck, which is different. So there's three here, but we have one still newer trash truck. As far as for that program, at this point in time, I believe there's two available.
And they're not the two we're auctioning off?
No, they are not.
So we could add a third one into service if we chose to keep the one that's listed as fair, that only needs two new tires and the, down the road, that could save us if we needed to purchase another vehicle because we're only auctioning $500. We'll get $500 a few years from now as well, just in the scrap metal alone.
I'm just wondering, these dump trucks that you're referring to have been used at the sewer plant, and if I'm not mistaken, those are pretty roughly used out there. And I don't know if they'd be appropriate to use for trash pickup in the community.
I, I think there's some residual wear on tear considerably because they've been at the sewage treatment plant. That is correct.
Well, another thing on these trucks, the garbage trucks and the dump trucks, if you don't use them, they deteriorate, all the hydraulics, the airlines. It's all very expensive maintenance. And if you don't use them, the hoses dry out and you're, it's thousands and thousands of dollars to replace that stuff. So when these trucks hit a certain age, they're done unless, unless you're using them every day and keep them maintained, so.
Now, my other, oh, go ahead, I apologize.
Well, no, I mean, it's just one of those, it's just reality with, with equipment like that. It's super expensive to, to replace that, that type parts and stuff, anyway. If we want to get anything for them, it'd be better to sell them while they're still usable or somewhat usable.
I have two questions. First one, is the, the total salvage value estimated to be $55,642, but you've got two vehicles that are worth $25,000 apiece? So your numbers aren't right here. I added them up, I came up with about $65,000. And do we have a, do we have a standard policy on when we should, you know, take things to salvage or get rid of vehicles, or how do we determine?
Um, I can defer to Mr. Farina. Normally, we look at wear and tear and cost and maintenance on those vehicles. And when those maintenance vehicles become more costly to operate and the years and the mileage add up, then we start looking at going in to move from disposal of those vehicles.
I understand we got a graveyard, it's got a lot of vehicles in it.
And, yes, sir, Mr. Anderson, this is one of them we're bringing forward to you so we can get rid of those vehicles. That's what we're trying to do. And you all may recall, approximately a year ago, we brought all the trash containers to council and we sold those, I believe, to Coolidge. We decided to wait an additional year on these trash trucks to see how that program was operating and working.
That's good. Do we, uh, how do we do this? Do we auction them off at public auction, or do we have people that, that are in the business to come in and buy equipment, or what?
Uh, Councilmember Anderson, we do work with a public auction site to go ahead and do that. Go and auction those vehicle, vehicles on our behalf.
We do have a policy on disposed assets and it outlines in there how you can dispose of them. So you could get that from the town clerk if you like.
Yeah, thank you.
The other two vehicles that I wanted to bring up, I was wondering if other departments could use them. The first was the ATV. I didn't know if either our police department or our fire department could use them, especially when you're looking at if you need a rescue off of F Mountain and you need to get somebody up there quickly, you can't necessarily get a truck up there. The second vehicle that I'll also bring out at this time is the 4,000-gallon water truck. And could that be used for other purposes as well?
Councilmember Walter, council, on the water truck, first of all, we brought that information to you all when we requested the purchase of a brand-new water truck. That water truck has some major issues, so we can't even transport water in it. So we really do need to dispose of that. The ATV is approximately thirty years old, and I'm not sure the condition it's in, but having had an ATV, after about twenty, twenty-five years, those are considered hazardous just based upon the use and the time.
Okay. It was a shot.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Dangerous.
I guarantee you, there's no department head that would go put a vehicle on this list if he thinks he's not gonna get it replaced. They know these, these are used, they're gone. And if you think that we're gonna get to $55,000 on that, don't hold your breath until we get it. Because it isn't a public auction, and this is a guesstimate on that, John. It's whatever the, the auction happened, who's ever at that auction that day?
I understand, Mr. Mayor, but it didn't add up. If you take the individual items they had on here, it did, it did not add up. Just a math problem. Don't know whether it's accurate or not, but somebody just didn't add it up correctly.
Yep, okay. Well, I guarantee you, all those things go, uh... Wilbur, you remember some of the stuff that we used to have? I had a fire truck that you had to park it downhill and pump the, park the, pop the clutch to get it going. I mean, that's what we've had in this town, and we're finally bringing it up. That red fire truck, yeah. Okay, so we've been discussed all, does any other member of the council have anything on B, C, F, and G? Then we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve B, C, F, and G.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda items B, C, F, and G. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
New Business, New Business A, Resolution Number 1521-15, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, but now County, Arizona, canvassing the votes and declaring and adopting the results of the special election held May 19th, 2014. It should be 2015. So I will make that correction. As for the canvas, the election was held May 19th, 2015. The Town of Florence, when it votes alone, votes as one precinct. The number of registered voters that the Town of Florence has is 4,422. The number of ballots cast in this election was 1,854. The number of blank ballots that were cast in this election was six. Voter turnout was 41 percent, 41.93 percent. The voter turnout of blank ballots was .14 percent. And on Proposition Number 407, the number of yes votes was 1,439 or 77.87 percent. The number of no votes was 409 or 22.13 percent.
Does any member of the council have anything that they'd like to ask Lisa about it? Well, before we have a motion, before we vote on it, I'd like to make a couple of comments. The staff couldn't go out and recommend which way the people voted. Lisa and Mike did a heck of a job on educating the people, getting the information out. I'd like to publicly thank them for the job you guys did, you did great. I'd also like to mention that the Florence High School, or the Florence Unified School District, sent not one but two blurbs out reminding people to vote, which I thought we, we, they'd asked us if they could do it. We told them yes, they did a very good job, I want to thank them publicly. Also, the different organizations that allowed us to come and meet with them and talk to them and try to explain this very important issue out for the Town of Florence. The Chamber of Commerce was, was there, they came out with a nice article in the newspaper for us, and we really appreciate that. And I think the ones that we appreciated the most were those that voted yes for it. But I would also like to say to those that voted no for it, watch what we're doing this year. We will prove that we can do what you, what we've asked to do, and we're not gonna go spend your money foolishly. And hopefully, the next year, when we have an election, that we will have 100 percent behind us for, for the, for the special election. With that being said-
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I just have one question for Lisa. Why did the post office return 348 of them? I mean, what, they're, they're already addressed to the county, aren't they?
Well, there is, uh, there's one stipulation to mailing something that's pursuant to any election, especially ballot material, and that is that it's not forwardable. So if people do not make contact with the post office, telling them directly, or I'm sorry, if people do not make contact with the voter registrar, telling them where to mail their items to, then the items can't be forwarded. So if I go out of town and I've got a to-be-forwarded thing in my mailbox, it will return that. Or if I have moved without changing my voter registration information, it will not be forwarded.
Oh, okay, these, these were people that were gone and?
It was either people who have moved or people who were out of town. It's, it's-
Oh, okay.
It's, it's- It was either people who have moved or people who were out of town. It's ballots that could not be forwarded, so they were returned.
Okay. Wasn't a problem on the address?
No, sir.
Or anything? Okay. Thank you.
One organization I did forget to mention was the Florence Fire Department, their association. The signs you saw were theirs. They weren't anybody else's. Those were from the Firefighters Association. Firefighters Association, want to thank them too for spending the time and money to put those signs out. We appreciate that. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1521-15, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, canvassing the votes and declaring and adopting the results of the special election held on May 19, 2014.
Fifteen.
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 I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to top Resolution 1521-15. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B. Discussion approval/disapproval of selecting a new council member with a term expiring December 2016.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have had all of our interviews with the five candidates that are there. Are there any other questions that you have prior to going to a motion for any of them? Okay. At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion...Lisa, do you have?
At this time, you open the floor for nominations.
Okay, is that where we're at?
That's where you're at.
Okay, we need...at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for council members in Town of Florence.
I'd like to nominate Karen Wall.
I would like to nominate Tom Smith.
I would like to nominate Jeff Woolley.
I would like to nominate Art Buckley.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. We will take them on the vote on the way they were nominated. We'll do a roll call vote with the person denominated going first.
Okay, hold on just one second then. Okay, at this time, we are voting on shall Karen Wall be the next council member with a term to expire December 2016, beginning with Councilmember Hawkins.
Okay, now, each of us have a vote on each candidate. Is that correct?
That's correct. What will happen is, we will go through a roll call vote. I'll ask each of you how you vote. The first person receiving four votes will be nominated to serve on council and will be sworn in this evening.
Okay. Just for clarification.
Okay. Councilmember Hawkins.
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gleene.
No.
Councilmember Woolridge.
No.
Councilmember Walter.
Yes.
Mayor Rankin.
No.
Did you...
The motion does not carry. The vote is three to three. Next item is shall council member, or shall, sorry, Tom Smith be a council member with a term to expire December 2016? Beginning with the person who made the nominations, Councilmember Gleene.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Hawkins.
No.
Councilmember Woolridge.
No.
Councilmember Walter.
No.
Mayor Rankin.
Yes.
That is two to four. We move on to the next person. Shall Mr. Jeff Woolridge be a member of the Town Council with a term to expire December 2016?
I related to me, Lisa.
Sorry. Woolley. Wrote down the wrong name. Woolley, starting with Councilmember Woolridge. There we go. Councilmember Woolridge.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Gleene.
No.
Councilmember Hawkins.
No.
Councilmember Walter.
No.
Council...Mayor Rankin.
No.
We're moving on. Shall Art Buckley be a member of council with a term to expire 2016? Starting with Vice Mayor Walter.
Yes.
Councilmember Hawkins.
No.
Councilmember Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Gleene.
No.
Councilmember Woolridge.
No.
Mayor Rankin.
No.
We are out of nominations.
Okay, I'd like a motion to go into executive session for legal discussion on parliamentary procedure on what we do next. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
This will be strictly on parliamentary procedures, not on the candidates. Okay, we have a motion, second to go to executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go into executive session. Folks, we'll be back in just a little bit. Need a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn from executive session.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we went into executive session to discuss parliamentary procedures and what is available to the council so that we can make a decision tonight. The council has been informed of the options available, and we're ready to proceed at this time. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the nominations.
No.
No. Make a motion to go back to the nominations.
Back to the nominations. Renominate.
Second. We have a motion and a second to renominate, go back and renominate. Is that correct, Cliff?
Mayor, members of the council, I think it's to open the nominations again.
Okay.
Actually, we can word it that way. Make a motion to open the nominations again. We want to adhere to parliamentary procedure, and this is the first time that we, as a council, have needed to go through this process, so we appreciate your patience.
Bill, will you second that?
Second. The reason I asked you to, she made the reason, and you second it. Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We open up the nominations for councilperson.
I nominate Karen Wall.
Ms. Wall, will you accept the nomination? Thank you.
I'll nominate Tom Smith.
Mr. Smith, will you accept the nomination? The camera doesn't pick up, nodding head. Any other nomination?
I'll nominate Jeff Woolley.
Mr. Woolley, will you accept the nomination?
I'll nominate Art Buckley and Dulane Coleman.
Mr. Buckley, will you accept the nomination? Dulane? Thank you. Okay, we have Karen, Tom, Jeff, Art, and Dulane. Go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Are you closing the nominations, sir?
Okay. Is any other...well, there are nobody else nominate. I guess nominations are closed.
Then the first item. Cliff, do I call it a reconsideration, or do I call it a nomination? Okay, the second round of nominations. First member we're looking at is Karen Walls for councilmember seat expiring December of 2016. And I'm starting with Councilmember Hawkins. Councilmember Hawkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gleene.
No.
Councilmember Woolridge.
No.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Yes.
Mayor Rankin.
Yes.
We have a new council member.
Okay, congratulations, Karen. Karen, will you come forward so you can get sworn at? I mean, sworn in. One of the last official duties of our outgoing judge.
I, Karen Wall, am a member of our firm, support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the law, the State of Arizona. Thank you.
Come on up, girl. Watch the courts. Thank you, Your Honor. Enjoy Hebrew.
Thank you.
So you get to sit up here and make your first speech tonight, too. Department reports. All the council have had an opportunity to look at the department reports. Is there any comments or any questions you have, your department heads that are here present?
Parks and Rec, what's the timeline on the Aquatics Center? People have been asking me. I said I thought it was around the 1st of July, but I'm not sure.
Mayor, council, we're shooting for 4th of July weekend on the Aquatics Center. We have a few easements to grant here in the next week or so, and that should allow us to tie in all the utilities. So we're really just waiting on that stuff.
So we'll be having activities at Heritage Park along with the Aquatics Park will be open?
If all goes well, that's the plan.
That's great, yeah. I think you'll have a lot bigger crowd with it open.
Hope so.
Any other question, any of the department reports?
I have a question on the fire department, the emergency standbys or the move-ups. If I understand that, that's where you take the fire truck and you drive it down the road and park it someplace?
Yeah. Well, if one of the engines is tied up on a call, then the other engine is moved up to a midpoint location so that they're available for the next call. It's just a way to kind of hedge not knowing which direction we're going to need to go. It's a way to get the quickest response time.
In the...all the times that we've done that, we've done it 105 times this year, have you ever used a standby vehicle?
I couldn't answer that yet. I've been here for three weeks. I have not looked at that data. So I can get back to you on that. I don't...
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is it an effective thing to do, you know, because we're wasting a lot of gas and resources, and there's a risk that that other station's not covered, wherever it might be?
If I could make a comment on that, yes, it has been used. I'm aware of that. How many times, I don't know. I guess the idea is provide the protection at the closest possible for the best response time from that midpoint in case it is needed to back up that other unit in case of a fire or a large wreck, or something going on at the prison that's going to take longer to address, or even a house fire in the Anthem area. And hopefully, we don't have those very often. But if they get there fighting a fire and they see they need more resources, then that unit is closer to respond for them to back up those firefighters that are already on scene. How many times it been, John? I don't know. But that was some of the things that we looked at before on the cost factor of it and everything like that. And I initially thought it was kind of, you know, it was a waste. But when you start talking about the possibility of being able to save somebody's life, there's...we can't put a cost on that.
Well, no, I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to see if it's effective.
Yeah, I think it...personally, I think it has been.
I can tell you that it's a standard procedure across the country to stage units like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other...on the management reports? Call to the public, second call to the public? Thanks, Joe.
Mayor and council, I would just like to say we are doing our darnest to get our project underway. We've had a lot of hurdles that we have passed. We have ADQ, ADWR, Corporation Commission. We just signed a contract with APS and sent them a check for $350,000. They have another half million dollars coming for power, not just for us, but for our neighbors. And we're doing everything to have a win-win situation for both Johnson and the Town of Florence. And thank you so much for working with us.
Thank you, Joe. Any other call to the public? Mr. Tate? I can't...I'm not going to try it. I cannot say his name. I have hard time. Cheetah. Mr. Cheetah. I'm trying. I just...I don't know. There's just something there that...
I'll help you.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I'll help you. The fastest jungle cat in the world. It's Cheetah. Perfect.
All right.
He doesn't spell like that.
Okay.
My name is Jim Cheetah. I live at 6840 West Trenton Way, but I spend most of my time down here, on Main Street. Spend some time on the Copper Corridor. For those of you who know the Copper Corridor, you know those towns need a lot of help, a lot more help than we need. They have a tremendous budget in Florence. We have the budget of, based on about 25,000 people with 8,000 residents, 4,000 registered voters, and only 1,800 vote. Quite interesting. I applaud you for the way that you handled the filling of this vacant space. Pretty good. But I went home disappointed after the five candidates were interviewed because each of them were asked a very important question. That is, what could we do better? And the answers to that question were not very fulfilling. We could do a lot better on Main Street in Florence, a lot better. You know it. I know it. We need to get together and do it. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Cheetah. Denise?
Denise Coler. I walked up and down...well, actually, I didn't walk up and down. I sort of hobbled along. We parked, and I hobbled a little more, parked again, hobbled a little more, all up and down Main Street today. hobbled a little more, all up and down Main Street today. I went to a restaurant that was supposed to be open. Sign said it was supposed to be open. There were people in there. Wasn't open. I wanted to, I was asking people to put this flyer up for the Vacation Bible School. I cannot believe how many empty storefronts there are along Main Street. I mean, we drive up and down it all the time, and when you're driving by, you see, oh, yeah, there's one, there's one, but when you're walking it, it's amazing. It really and truly is. And when I went to that restaurant this morning, I could not believe, got a sign out here that says you're open at 10 o'clock, and it was 10:30, and their door's locked. Why would you do that? Why would you open a business and not be open when you say you're gonna be? I just, I agree with Jim. We gotta do something to get the people that own these buildings to do something with them, or sell them to somebody that's gonna, if we want to revitalize our town. And I realize, you know, you guys can't do that, per se, but you need to get out there and encourage people to do something with it. It's really sad. Went to the bottle shop. We just gave them permission to do the stuff with liquor. They weren't open either, not even the drive-through. Well, we went down about nine, so some businesses weren't open, but they had signs up when they were gonna be. So, maybe we need to, I don't know, put a bomb under some of them, I don't know, but we need to do something. It's really sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the council?
I would like to address a comment that was just made about the candidates and our lack of appropriate response. One of my responses was that we need business in Florence, so I would like that clear for the record, please.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none, I'll call, close to the public. Call the council, John?
Nothing, thank you.
Becky?
Yes, I would again like to reiterate and thank all the citizens of Florence for voting in our special election and making it an affirmative vote so that we can go into this next fiscal year and accomplish tasks that we need to. Thank you very much.
Bill? And that, and it was, it was a three to one vote, which I thought was really good, so I'm thinking on the last, on the original election, it probably was because the, it was on the back of the ballot. I almost went over and asked the girls when I was voting, where's the home rule? But then, as I was walking over to ask them, I noticed when I was carrying it, there was stuff on the back, which I've never, I don't remember ever seeing anything on the back of ballots before. Usually there'll be multiple pages, but I think that's one reason it failed the first time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Bill, or Valerie?
I would also like to thank the voters for their support and enabling us to continue to provide services, and I'd like to welcome Karen aboard, and hope she doesn't think she made a mistake.
Okay, Ms. Wall, your first shot.
I just would like to thank the mayor and the members of the council for trusting me enough to join you on this team, and I'm looking forward to the next 18 months.
I actually have a lot this evening. I'm going to start by welcoming our newest council member aboard. Thank you very much. You've been very active in the community, and we have full faith in you fulfilling duties, representing the public. I also want to thank the fire department. I had a small fire at my house. They had an amazing response time, and thank you for that. Police showed up as well. We have a great program going on at our library, and if you haven't already signed up, children and adults can come out and sign up for reading books, earning prizes. They have guest speakers. They have a lot of exciting events going on, as well as our Parks and Rec department. We have a summer program for children, so if you're in need of childcare, please make sure you take a look at it and sign up if you're in need, or if your kids are looking for something to do that's educational and fun. I wanted to go back to one of the speakers that spoke at the beginning, Adrian, and I'd encourage Adrian and Jim Cheetah possibly to talk, because he's part of a foundation that has trees and resources, and maybe we can come up with a partnership to work together, especially in enhancing the dog park facility for our residents. I feel like I'm missing something, but I'm just going to say that's all for tonight. Thank you.
My final comments, I'd like to thank all the candidates that put in for the council position. Decision was made to put Ms. Wall on tonight, which was a decision made by a majority of the council. We believe that she'll do a good job. We also believe you would have, but this is the way elections go. I've won some and I've lost some, so you just have to go with the flow. If you are really interested in Florence, I would recommend you get involved with the next election coming up in a year and a half. Run for council and unseat us or replace us. Again, to the voters of Florence, thank you very much for voting for the special election. The special election is gonna allow us to continue to move forward, even though at a slower rate than what we have been, we're still gonna go forward. I would ask you to make sure and watch the money we're spending. Make sure that we're spending it in the right way. If you have questions, please come in and ask. Don't go out on the streets and just start blabbing about how bad a job we're doing before you know what we're actually doing. Come in and find out. Come and ask your councilpeople, they're here, they'll find out the questions if they don't know it, to find out the answers for your questions. The summers here, again, those with pools, or your children are out swimming in ditches or canals, make darn sure they're safe. They're not supposed to be swimming in ditches and canals like we did when we were kids and didn't know any better. But around pools, please watch the babies. We don't want any horrible drowning events here in town. Get that park open by the Fourth of July. If you don't, you're liable to have a whole bunch of people banging on your door come the Fifth. Want to thank all of the, the construction company, BIA, Skip and Skid, for finally getting together. We've got all the permits, they're all already paid for, we've got them in place, we have one thing to do next meeting, I think we're gonna do the easement, and we should have that pool open by the Fourth of July. If not, I'll give everybody Brian's telephone number after the meeting. Lisa's got something, and she wants to bring up Lisa.
Mayor, I would just like to remind you of a parliamentarian point, is that underneath Arizona state law, we have three more agenda items that require voting on. New council members cannot vote until they've been officially sworn in for 24 hours, so we just want to make sure that our newest council member does not vote this evening.
And, but she can still attend the agenda or the.
Yes, sir.
Session. You can't vote yet, you just have to sit there and have your input.
Got it.
The swimming pool is open for the kids. Brian, the high school swimming pool is open, and that will be going for a while. Okay.
It'll be open through the end of June.
Till the end of June? And then that's when we're gonna open our pool?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Okay. Any other discussion? Now, we need a motion then?
One more introduction.
Wait a minute, do you have something else, Bill?
I was gonna make a motion, that we adjourn to executive session.
Wait a minute.
One more introduction. We have a gentleman who's been here the past two meetings now, and he hasn't been introduced to council or to the public.
Mayor, council, vice mayor, thank you. This is Mr. Dave Strayer. He is the interim fire chief. He is gonna be working with here, us here, over the next several months, just trying to line everything up for the fire department, and make sure we're all in line, and helping us move forward and continuing in that direction. So I want to welcome him for being with us.
Welcome aboard. We're all working together for the same goals, make Florence a better place to live. Need a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, adjourned to executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll go to executive session.